You're watching CCN, Clarksville Community Network, produced by Goodwin Productions. Powered by CDE Lightband.
Hello again, everyone, and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum, brought to you by Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce. Today's forum is intended to give you, the voters, an informed choice when you go to the polls to vote in the state primary and county general elections. That's on Thursday, August the first. I'm Van Stokes, and I will be your moderator for today's session. Once again, today's forum is coming to you from the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center here in Clarksville. In this session, we'll have the opportunity to meet and talk with the candidates, who will be on the ballot for the Clarksville Montgomery County School Board District Number Two. They are, to my left, Ms. Laura Barnett, Mr. Richie Patton, and Ms. Casey Bryant. We will begin this session with each candidate having two minutes in which to present opening remarks. Following this segment, we will then turn to our panelists for questions. Joining us once again as panelists, to my right, are Mr. Jay Alberta, Ms. Lornith Peters, and Ms. Susan Zidek. Now, each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question from our panelists, with the first response coming in rotating order from our candidates. At the conclusion of the questioning, each candidate will then have two minutes in which to present closing statements. Closing statements will be delivered in reverse order from the opening statements. Our timekeeper for this session is Mr. Phil Harpel. The Clarksville Montgomery County School Board is composed of seven members serving four-year terms, each from their respective districts. Responsibilities include setting the policies that govern the district, presenting county commissioners with a balanced budget, and holding the director of schools accountable for reaching goals set by the district. Now, this involves dealing with issues to include structural renovations, growth, funding, higher curriculum standards, and of course, other areas. Let's go to our candidates now for their opening comments. We will hear first from Ms. Laura Barnett.
Hello, my name is Laura Barnett, and I'm a Clarksville native. I've married Chris Barnett and have been here in the community my entire life. I spent 10 years teaching high school English, then became an assistant principal in our school district. I've been the principal of two middle schools over 18 years, and currently, I'm a professor at Austin P., and my work is with master students who are becoming principals. I have three children, who I've raised here in the Clarksville Montgomery County School System, and I'm at a place in my life and my career where I have the opportunity to serve the school board, because I'm not part of the employment group there. But I have such a passion and such an interest in our students, our community, our schools, and have a really great idea of how to achieve the goals that we have set.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear opening comments from Mr. Richie Patton.
Thank you. I'm Richie Patton, candidate for school board. I'm a veteran, a father of children in CMCSS, Clarksville native, CMCSS graduate, small business owner. There's a long list of terms about me that I could continue to name off, but really, when I think about what I would want to see on the school board as someone that I can relate to and someone that relates to the community. I have worked in fast food, raising a family while running a restaurant, while working at a restaurant. I've been unemployed, living with family. I've been in the military. I'm a disabled veteran. After eight years, I was medically retired. I run a small farm with my wife, of 18 years. We met, actually, in CMCSS schools. And I think that I have a really broad occupational background and family background that would make me, that does make me a great candidate and would make me a great school board member. I can relate to a lot of my constituents. I can relate to a lot of the problems in Clarksville. Having three kids in the school system myself, I see a lot of problems. I talk to a lot of families and a lot of teachers. I'm always impressed by the quality of our teachers, and so I would like to see that continue to grow, because I know that we have a lot of vacuum space there. And so, those are things that, as I'm, as I'm running for school board, and as I've been living my life, that I'm constantly seeing and constantly identifying. And so, I thought it was time. I'm at a place in my career where I have the opportunity and ability to really get out in front of the community and try to make change that I want to see for my kids, change that I would like to see for my grandkids. And so, I think now is the right time, and so that's why I'm here, as a candidate for school board in CMCSS District Two. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear opening comments from Ms. Casey Bryant.
Hi, thank you. My name is Casey Bryant, and I have two kids, 11 and 13, and I'm married to McLean Bryant. Between the two of us, we both run businesses here in Clarksville. We've been here for about 11 years. He was born and raised in Clarksville. Apparently, that is like a special club that the rest of us can never get into. But, but this is our home, and our kids love it here. We love it here. And my journey for wanting to run for school board started back in 2020. When COVID hit, my kids were both in the public school system, and it really opened my eyes. Like many of my friends, so many parents and teachers that I've talked to, their journey started about the same time. And there were a lot of things happening within the school system that I didn't understand and that I didn't really, I wasn't excited about. And it went down the rabbit hole. And I discovered, after attending many, many school board meetings and sessions, that our, our school board really needs some help. They need a parent that is willing to get involved and stand up for our children, that's going to ask the hard questions, and that is going to put the parents and the teachers and the kids, the problems that they're facing, in front of the, in front of the county, and start discussing these instead of running them under, pushing them under the rug. So, that is why I decided to start to run for school board. I, again, I'm just, I'm a business owner, I'm a parent, I'm a very involved community member, and I'm really excited for this opportunity to just make a better place for our kids, because ultimately, that's what it's all about.
Thank you very much to each of our candidates for your opening comments. We will now go to our panelists. We will turn first to Mr. Jay Alberta, who will have the first response from Ms. Barnett.
As always, I like starting the easy questions first. We've just heard your opening statements. Can you tell me, of the, in your opening statement, what is the one thing that uniquely qualifies you for this position above everything else that you have told us in your opening statement?
Thank you. The 28 years I spent in the public school system as a teacher and as a leader, being both in a Title I school and in a much larger and more affluent school with a really diverse group of students, I have personally faced the issues that we are dealing with now in schools. And I understand the impact on students. I understand the difficulties and the challenges that teachers face, and understand the solution pathways, because I have been there and been part of the work. And I think to have someone sitting on the school board who deeply understands public schools is the qualifying characteristic.
Mr. Patton.
And so, when I think about the most important things from myself, when I, when I think about what I'm qualified for school board and why I want to be on school board, it's definitely my, my work background. It's very unique to be a veteran, to work retail, to work fast food. I've worked in medical offices. I've worked in normal office buildings. I currently work in a remote role. I work in multiple regions across the globe. I've worked, ran clinical trials in 50 different countries. And so, I have, while I, I act locally, I do have a global mindset, and so I'm able to take those, the things that I've learned from my, my background working locally, as well as my problem solving that I've gained from working in these global roles and in these very high experience roles, I can bring that to a position on the school board and bring that knowledge and skill to better, my position and help better the community.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes. So, the main role of a school board member, I believe, is to be a representative of our community. And I think one of the things that I can bring is that I have been a business owner for 15 years. My husband and I are both running businesses, employing 20 people between the two of us. And as a business owner, I know that a school is very different, but we are very good at identifying problems and creating solutions. And I think that that is such an important aspect of a school board member, no matter what your experience, is identifying the problems and then bringing everybody together to create solutions for those problems. I believe I can do that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lornith Peters, you have the next question, and it goes to Mr. Patton.
What do you think is the number one priority in this office? And how do you plan to carry it out?
So, the, the number one priority in this office is making sure that our decisions and our mindset on our school board is focused on the growth of Clarksville and on the future expectations of what Clarksville will be. At this time, it feels like we're, we're just building for what we need right now, the next, the next thing that's coming up, as opposed to the next five years, the next 10 years, when we're looking at opening multiple schools. It, I would, I would prefer us to prioritize growth and think about that growth mindset and open schools that are bigger, open schools with more resources and capacity to be a part of the community, as opposed to the schools that we're building now, which are just made to be full as soon as they're open.
Ms. Bryant.
I agree with that. I believe being proactive instead of reactive is definitely something that Clarksville struggles with all the way around. And I think, as a school board member, again, identifying the problems and creating long-term solutions versus what can we just put a Band-Aid on right now, which is, I think, what we do a lot of. I forgot the question, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat that question?
What was it? Yes.
What do you think the, the number one priority is of this office? And how do you plan to carry it out?
Okay, thank you. Yes, so the number one priority is, again, thinking of long-term solutions and, and not just Band-Aids. But another thing I think is really big is the, the school board right now doesn't even understand their governance policy. And I know this is Latin to those that aren't, you know, involved with the school board, but they don't even really understand who can make policy and who can't make policy. And I think that that is a really, really big problem. And in order to do anything, all of the things that we talk about today, we at first need to figure out who can create policy and, and go from there.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett.
Thank you. Again, I agree with these, these answers about vision and leadership. I think the priority that I would have to set in front of myself as a school board member would be to deeply understand the schools that we're serving and the needs that the teachers and the students and the families have. I would say that Clarksville Montgomery County has grown so quickly that we're at a tipping point. And the way that we've always done business is not necessarily going to be the best way to continue to do business in the future. And I've worked with schools across the state of Tennessee, and I see a lot of creative solutions and ways to think about the needs that we have in our schools that we have not even brought to the surface because we're doing business as usual. So, I think the priority would be to, to serve the students and the teachers first.
Thank you very much. Ms. Susan Zidek, you have the next question, and it will go to Ms. Casey Bryant.
Ms. Bryant, the Tennessee General Assembly recently passed legislation authorizing teachers to carry firearms concealed under certain restrictions. What is your position on whether CMCSS should authorize teachers to carry concealed firearms in the classrooms and on school premises?
Going straight for it, aren't we? I, I believe, well, first of all, I don't think that this is going to have a, a direct impact on Montgomery County schools, because one of the things that this was passed for was mostly for rural schools. I think those are the ones that it's going to impact, are the schools that don't have access to SROs. And we have those in our schools. So, I don't know if this is really going to be, you know, have a big impact on our schools. But I do, I do agree that we definitely need more safety. I think that safety is a priority for our children. And, and I honestly think that this has led to so many other issues, like the cellphone disruption in the schools. That's one of the reasons that parents want to make sure that their kids have cellphones on them at all times, because they're afraid of their safety. And so, safety is an issue, and I think that we do need to find a problem for it. And, and I, again, here in Montgomery County, luckily, we have SROs.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett.
Thank you. Having nothing to do with the right to carry a weapon, I do not believe additional guns belong in CMCSS schools. I think that the SRO and other law enforcement, who we can quickly get into our buildings, is the only person who should be holding a weapon. I cannot imagine running a school where I had teachers carrying weapons and the thought of a student getting a hold of it. I think having guns in school that are not on a law enforcement officer would be a terrible idea for our county.
Thank you. Mr. Patton.
Yeah, so it's spring, and so in spring, at our house especially, with little kids, we have ants everywhere. Everywhere that there's crumbs, there's ants. When we get ants, we call the exterminator. We don't call someone to bring us more ants. Ants, more ants aren't going to fix the problem to ants, just like more guns aren't going to fix our gun problem in our school. Guns are our, a reactive tool. And so, something has to happen in order for one of our teachers to be able to use that gun. And when that has happened, we've already failed. And so, I don't think that guns are a solution. I don't think bringing guns to Montgomery County will fix or solve anything. We need something that is proactive. We need something like our SROs, like the other tools that we have in our tool bag and, and additional tools that, that we, we can bring up and that we can bring to the school board to try and reduce guns in our schools and just gun violence in general.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jay Alberta, you have the next question, and it will go to Ms. Laura Barnett.
Let's talk about funding. With the school system, with the number of children, as well as the, the teachers and auxiliary staff make up, what would constitute the 16th largest city in the state of Tennessee? How do you communicate the need for the funding, especially working so closely with the county commission? And how do you explain it to the community as well?
That's a big question. And I think you have to look at the decline of achievement in Clarksville Montgomery County. I think you have to look at the feedback that we're getting from teachers and other employees, from parents and from students, to recognize that until we start to fund the schools and the teachers and the programs that we need, we're going to continue to slip down this slope, because we have gone from being one of the top 10 schools in the county to ranking number 44. And I, I think that we all believe that our children come first and that we want to provide them with the education to live healthy lives and to have great jobs and to be civically responsible. But we can't do it on a shoestring budget, and we have to get the message out for the need.
Mr. Patton.
And so, I think about that from two different aspects. The, the first one being is that we have a lot of inequality in our school system right now. There are schools that have a, a fully functioning, brand-new printer, and there are schools that have a hand-me-down, not-working printer from other schools. We have schools that still have damage from a tornado months ago, that still have roofs collapsing, while we also have brand-new schools that are, that are being built. And so, the allocation of resources is something that we really need to look at and discuss within the community. And then the second piece is that a lot of people are about to get, or if they haven't already, a new property valuation. Some properties are going to be going up, up to 65%. And so, that, for Clarksville, that means that more tax revenue will be coming in with those rezoned property values. And so, there will be more funds available. And so, looking at how we can allocate those funds appropriately with this new rezoning that's coming in, to make sure that we're targeting that inequality and make sure that, hopefully, a bigger proportion is going to our school system.
Ms. Bryant.
I go back to, to looking at the problems and finding solutions. I think that throwing more money at something doesn't necessarily make it a better, work better. So, I think, I think, yes, though, our schools, there are some issues with our funding. I think really, breaking down the, the programs that we have in the schools and where the funds are going, and figuring out, how can we better optimize, you know, the resources that we're using these funds for? And, because what we don't want to happen is throw more funding at some, at things that aren't working. And so, I think that is a great thing about our community, is that we have a, a lot of really amazing people that understand the intricacies of these things. And so, I think first, figuring out what, what we need to keep and what needs to go, again, not doing it the same way, just because it's the way that we've always done it, and then throwing funding towards the things that are working.
Thank you. Ms. Peters, you have the next question. It goes to Mr. Patton.
What do you think is or are the biggest issues impacting our students here in our county? And what are some ideas or some suggestions you have for us to deal with those issues?
So, I think that the lack of stability is one of the biggest issues that our students have. We've seen constant rezoning. Many of these kids have been rezoned multiple times throughout their educational career. And so, that rezoning comes from a, a lack of foresight. A lack of foresight on the growth that Clarksville is going to have, a lack of foresight on the capacity of these schools that we would need. And so, we're having to have kids commute 30, 45 minutes to school because of that lack of foresight, for that lack of stability. Along with that lack of stability, the other things that are contributing to that lack of stability is a lack of parental engagement. And a lot of that comes from the school system and the community really being contentious with each other. Trying to figure out how it should work post-COVID has been difficult. And I think CMCSS really hasn't hit the mark on that. And we really haven't restabilized how the community and how the system should work together. And so, we're seeing constant disaffected parents that are either not participating in the schools or eventually taking their schools or their children out of the system. And so, I would like to see a, a bigger focus on stability, because that's what our children really need.
Thank you. Ms. Bryant.
Yes, I think parental engagement is a huge issue. And I think because of the lack of parental engagement, and again, this was me in 2020. I, I looked at schools as just a place to drop off the kids. They do the learning, and then they come home and we do homework. And I was very, very disengaged. So, I'm speaking at this not as a judgmental perspective, but just as an understanding perspective, that the parents have got to get more involved in the things that we're setting up in our schools. And also, because this is contributing to huge, huge behavioral issues. I've talked to, we've, I've knocked on 400 doors already, and I have a survey that I'm handing out. And I say, "Fill out this survey on my website, because I want to hear what you're actually struggling with." And that is what we hear over and over and over again, is behavioral issues, behavioral issues. My kids are not able to learn. There's bullying. There's all of these things happening. And I really think that it boils down to the fact that the parents are not engaged. And I think it's up to the school board, honestly, to create policies that help the parents, encourage the parents to get more engaged.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett.
Thank you. I would love to solve parental engagement. It would be fabulous. And I love that answer. When I think about inside the school, I'm thinking about children who have adverse childhood experiences. Probably 60% of the students who show up on our campuses have adverse childhood experiences that have impacted them physically, mentally, emotionally. We have more incidence of students with disabilities. These kids spend seven and a half hours a day in our schools, the very best seven and a half hours they have to give. And the problem that I would solve would be the adult-to-student ratio. We would have more paraprofessionals, and we would have more resources to help support all the needs of our students and not just crowd them into a classroom and hurry them through the academic pacing guide that we have in front of us.
Thank you. Ms. Zidek, you have the next question, and Ms. Bryant, you have the first response.
Ms. Bryant, what role, if any, should the school system play in economic development and industry recruitment to our area?
Yes, that's a good question. I believe that, I mean, obviously, economic development impacts our schools greatly. And I think that that is one of the reasons that we are in the situation that we're in, is because we have a lot of economic development. We've had a lot of really large corporations and industrial complexes come into Clarksville, and we haven't been prepared to receive the people that that brings. And so, I think that they really go hand-in-hand, again, in being more proactive instead of reactive, and working together and figuring out, you know, what are, what are we wanting to bring into Clarksville? Let's take control of this, instead of just, you know, willy-nilly and doing what we want to do, and, and work together to better control and better plan for the development in our, in our county.
Ms. Barnett.
So, the role of economic development has always been tied to the affordability of a community and the education for the families that are going to move there. And we have always been able to tout that our school system is well-run, that there's not been a need for many private schools or other opportunities, because our school system does such an excellent job. And we put that in front of industries to entice them to come to our community. But as they do, we are not always serving the schools in a way to keep up with that growth. And our role is to continue to be part of the good news of Clarksville, but also to share the message that we've got to take care of the kids as they do show up here.
Mr. Patton.
Yeah, so actually, I love that question. I think that the, the school system should play a huge role in the economic development of the community, in creating pipelines into industry. So, we have our CMCSS academies, which already begin to specialize our students in, in different fields, different career paths. And so, the next step there would be partnering with trade schools, partnering with Austin P. to create feeder programs that those academies can then go into, which we then advertise the industry that we can bring to Clarksville, that can then, that can sit on top of that, that feeder program we would have with APSU, to begin hiring very qualified candidates. And the courses could be set up in a way that they meet the needs of an employer. And so, we could start that early on in their high school years, creating a resource center that helps kids to know what they're going to need in college, and then what they're going to need beyond college or a trade school, depending on how we set it up. And so, I, I do think that our schools have a, a big impact on the economic stability of our community. And I think that we should lean into that and create a better system for it.
If you've just joined us, you are watching Clarksville's Political Forum. We are meeting with candidates who will be on the ballot on Thursday, August the first. That's in the state primary and county general elections vote, which will take place, as I said, on August the first. Our candidates today will be on the ballot representing School Board District Number Two of Clarksville Montgomery County School System. Let's go back to our panelists if we can, return to our questions. Mr. Jay Alberta, you have the next question. It will go to Ms. Laura Barnett.
Several of, all of your answers have dealt with growth of Clarksville and trying to pinpoint that growth, because it's happening, as you said, willy-nilly, but, but trying to meet the demand. The big question that we have now between the school board and the county commission is the size of the new schools that are going to be built. Should we stay with the same-sized schools of the 1,500? Or should we look at the larger schools, like some are proposing up to 3,000? What's your opinion on that?
That's easy for me. We need to do what's best for students, and the research tells us what size those schools should be. And I'll use as an example that all the research tells us that a middle school should not exceed 800 students. And I've served in two middle schools as a principal, one with up to 1,100 students, the other with 1,500. And it becomes crowd control, and it's not personalized, and we don't have the opportunity to meet the individual needs of students. They can't even get to the bathrooms and water fountains. And so, a larger school is not the right solution. It is just an easy solution. We need to do what we know is best for kids.
Mr. Patton.
So, while I agree that there are issues and there are, there is research that shows that the larger our schools gets, the more difficulty there is in managing the school, I think that that is more of a, a leadership and a management problem and a architectural problem. We can design these schools where we don't have overlapping, overlapping pathways for these kids, where students don't have to fight over resources. They don't have to argue over resources. We're more connected now than we've been in the past, and so it's a lot easier to stay connected throughout these schools and, and have more diffuse communications. And so, I think that if we can enable more smart architectural design, better leadership, and more technology in our schools when we're building them bigger, we can really get around some of these deficits that you see in the research and make schools that are, are larger for our community, because that is what we need. When space is at a, a premium, we, we have to build bigger, and we have to find ways to make building bigger work.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes, you stole my answer. I believe, I agree with you 100%. I think that if we build bigger schools, we can do it in a, in a healthy way. And I think that, you know, at one hand, we're talking about fiscal responsibilities and the importance of the money that we spend in the school districts. And so, I think that this goes hand-in-hand with that. I think that if we build larger schools, we build them at the beginning with the, with the knowledge that they're going to grow, then we can save a lot of money in this area. And, and that money that's saved can go towards other things, like paying our teachers more and, you know, programs for the kids and things like that. So, I do think that building larger schools is a good idea, but I do think that also it needs to be done, it needs to be done well, and not just, like we do with a lot of other things, just throw it up just because it saves us money, because that won't save us money in the long run.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lornith Peters, you have the next question, and it will go to Mr. Patton.
If elected, how do you plan to stay connected or stay in touch with the students and the parents of your district?
So, having students in the CMCSS schools already, I have a lot of counterparts and a lot... a lot of contacts from my children and their friends and their friends' parents. Beyond that, I have a lot of connections that I've made throughout the school board, or throughout running from the school board, running for the school board. I have a small business with my wife where we run a local fair every year. And that is a way that I am able to stay connected to the community and through social media as well as another way that I plan to use moving forward. And so I think that there are a lot of avenues that I make myself available to my constituents and to the people of the district, and I will continue to grow those avenues once elected.
Ms. Bryant?
I'm already doing it. I have a form on my website. Like I said earlier, I have knocked at 400 doors. And I want to make it as possible, as easy as possible for parents and teachers and community members to reach out to me and share their concerns. Because again, unless we're getting down to what's actually happening and the concerns that our community is actually facing, we're going to have a hard time solving them. So I'm doing it already. I have a way for them to get ahold of me easily and quickly. And I think one of the reasons that I did that is because currently that is one of the complaints that I get from the parents specifically, is that they go and they stand in front of the school board, or they email the school board, and they get no response. And some of these things are really important things to the parent that need to be addressed. And so that really is the platform that I'm running on, is giving the parents and the teachers more of a voice, the community more of a voice. And in order to do that, they need to be able to communicate.
Ms. Barnett?
Yes, thank you. In my years in leadership and as a professor at Austin P., the open-door policy, the opportunity to talk about anything, anywhere, anytime, whether it's in the grocery store, or standing outside of church, or picking up the phone and calling, or sending an email or a text, has always been the way that I've served the community that I was in, just to be readily available. Because when a parent has a concern, it feels urgent, and it should be heard quickly. And I serve now as a surrogate in several schools, working with students who have an IEP or 504 and are in foster care. I do some mentoring of principals, and my relationships in this community run deep. I'm an easy person to find and an easy person to talk to.
Thank you very much. Ms. Susan Zidek, you have the next question, and it will go to Ms. Casey Bryant for the first response.
All right, thank you. We talked a little bit earlier about the school resource officers. In your opinion, is CMCS providing sufficient support for the SROs? And what, if anything, if any additional procedures or security policies should be in place?
Yes. Again, I think that the safety of our students is the most important thing that we could be focusing on. And I think that this is one thing that Montgomery County is doing fairly well, is we have SROs in all of our schools. The SROs are obviously trained. And I think the benefit of that is if something were to happen in our schools, we have somebody right there. At the moment, we don't have to wait. And so I think that this is a really important aspect of our schools. I can't really answer as to whether they feel supported or not, but I do think that it is important that we have them. And I think that this is something that we're doing well.
Ms. Barnett?
The SROs entered the schools before I became an administrator. And I've seen it from the teacher point of view, but also as a leader in the building. The relationship that we have with them, in my experiences in my schools, has been excellent. We coordinate our safety plans. We work through where cameras are going to be placed in the building. We make sure that we have protocols and backups for different types of emergencies that might take place. We communicate with their leaders. We build relationships with them. We know the SROs that fill in when they are out for the day for a training, or if we have an emergency and we call an SRO from another school to join us. I think it's been a fantastic relationship and a game changer.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patton?
Yeah, so when I think about SROs, I think about the SRO that I had when I was at Northeast, Officer Segovia, rest in peace. He was a great SRO. It was very easy to connect with him. And I hope that all of our other schools that we have now have something similar, have someone that the students can connect with that really becomes a part of that school community. And so I also can't speak to directly if they feel supported, but I can tell you that from my perspective, they are successful in what they're doing because we haven't had major incidents. It feels like when incidents do pop up, they are handled quickly and swiftly. When I would look at what I would do to support our SROs, I would look at our students and see how we can support our students to make them not create situations where SROs are needed. And so additional mental health support. If our students are hungry or frustrated or having issues, creating resource centers where they can go to and talk to someone immediately and instantly, where we can provide them higher-level care if needed, provide them what they might be missing in their lives that might eventually lead down the road to an SRO being needed. I think if we're proactive about that, that will help support our SROs down the road.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jay Alberta got us started with the questions from our panelists. So it's probably only right and proper that we go to Mr. Jay Alberta for the last question from our panelist.
Well, I have four questions. So we're not going to get all those in. So let's talk about something that's come up in front of the school board this past year, charter schools, and something that has hit the state legislature that did not pass this year, which were school voucher programs. I think most of those can be asking the same question. So give me your opinion on charter schools and the school voucher program.
Ms. Barnett, you have the first response.
Yes. So both charter schools and the voucher system come from the federal government as an opportunity in school districts that are failing to bring into communities better schools than the students are able to access from their homes. And I have worked with educators across the state. I have seen in Memphis some really fabulous charter schools that have become reward schools, but I've also worked with several that are unsuccessful. They're top-heavy. They don't have certified staff in place. As long as we remain an excellent school system, we should not be diverting funds from our current schools to use vouchers or to have charter schools that don't meet the needs of our students as well as our own schools do.
Thank you. Mr. Patton?
So I don't think that public funds should be used to go to private schools, whether that be through a voucher program, whether that be through charter schools. We do have a great school system, and we have a growing school system. And so we should really focus on how we can affect that growth through the structure that we have and just improve the structure and the structure and the protocols that we have in place with our school system. Sending those, the CMCS academies already create that opportunity for choice that a lot of parents want. And so, and those still fall within the structure of the public school system and of the requirements. And so I think that we should look at expanding those when we're looking at additional options as opposed to going towards charter schools or vouchers, which, when you look at research, continue to show that they actually don't work and they do cost more than what you would want in the long run. And so I don't think that they're the right thing for Clarksville, and I don't think that they're the right thing for most school systems.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes, I think that as a parent, I love the idea of having more choices. I've done several different types of schooling for my children. My children are two very different kids, and they learn about as opposite as you can. And so I like the idea of having different options to be able to educate them again, because my kids are my first priority. And so I do, I think that what they were talking about, the laws that they were discussing, I think that there were holes in those, and I don't think that they were perfect. Again, I think that this is something that we could implement if we do it well. And I think that more choices for kids is a plus as long as it's done well.
Thank you very much. We've had 10 rounds of questions for each of our candidates to answer. It's now time to go to the closing comments, which will be provided in the reverse order from the opening comments. We will hear first closing remarks from Ms. Casey Bryant.
Yes, thank you so much. Another thing I wanted to add that kind of goes into my closing statement is, one of the arguments against vouchers is that it takes away funding from the public schools. But what's really taking a lot of funding away is homeschooling. And my friends are pulling their kids out to homeschool left and right. And parents are pulling, on my Facebook, when I'm, you know, asking questions from the community for their feedback, they're pulling their kids out of our schools, and they're putting them in private schools, and they're finding these other options because they're not happy with the way that things are being run, and they want more choices. And so I'm willing to jump in. I'm willing to really work and dig deep and figure out exactly where we're failing and where we can improve. That we have some amazing people in our community. I run a business where I talk to hundreds of business owners and community members, you know, every week, every month. And so I have a lot of hope for the community that we have here. We have a lot of parents that are willing to step up and make a change. We have some amazing kids. We have some great teachers. We're losing teachers at an alarming rate. A lot of good teachers are leaving. My mother-in-law was a teacher at Montgomery County Schools for over 30 years, and she retired early because she was not happy with the way things were being run. And her story is like hundreds of others in our county. And what a shame to lose such an amazing teacher that we probably would have had five or 10 more years, you know, investing into our children. And this isn't just a lonesome story. This is happening all over. So I'm running on giving our parents a little bit more choices, getting them more involved, building parent engagement, also, you know, being a voice for our teachers and our children, and keeping it to the basics, reading, writing, and arithmetic. I think that a lot of the schools have gotten away from that. And I really, really think it's important that we focus on the basics.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear closing comments from Mr. Richie Patton.
Thank you. And so just to push back to the voucher question, this year that did fail, in the budget, they did set aside $144 million for that voucher program if it had passed. And so $144 million, I think statewide, could go very far. It was supposed to change the face of education in Tennessee. I think that it still can. And so when I'm talking about a lot of these programs, like creating resource centers within our schools, creating enhanced mental health care, creating avenues to attract more teachers and to train and retain our great talent that we have now, that $144 million seems like a really good way to do that for our school district and for school districts statewide. Another thing that we could do with that money that's near and dear to my heart is our students with IEPs. We are constantly missing the mark. There are mandates, legal mandates, that we have to meet that we're not. And for me, I am constantly hearing that parents are told, "Oh, your option might be homeschooling." That is really how, the only way that we can meet your IEP is to not even try. And so I think that that is a failure on the school system's part. And so I would like to see additional resources put in place there. We have things like the virtual school for these students that maybe can't fit into a traditional classroom environment and may be able to thrive in a virtual environment. And so expanding the advertising there, instead of pushing our kids to homeschool or to fallout or to go to a different school district, pushing them to our other resources that we have, like the adult high schools, like the academies, like the virtual school. And so I would like to see an expanded focus on those programs where we're advertising more throughout Clarksville and we're advertising externally as well. I'd also like to see more of our schools participate in the Purple Star Program, which is a program for military families when they have kids in their school system. And it shows that our schools are really set up to receive those military families and, as they're leaving, to help them leave the school system. And so I'd like to see a better focus on our military families and our relationship with the Fort Campbell families. And so, again, I'm Richie Patton, candidate for School Board in District Two. You can find me at voterichipattan.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will hear our final closing comments from Ms. Laura Barnett.
Thank you. I have been an educator my entire career. My life story is working with kids and families and teachers in schools. I am a fixer. I like to take things that are broken and put them back together. At New Providence Middle School, we went from having Ds and Fs on our report card to being a straight-A school with a reward school status. I moved to Rossview, and for the first time in their history, they were a Level Five school in both growth and achievement. I know the hard work, and I know when I'm at a board meeting, the very fine people there who do represent all walks of our community are dealing with things very much on the surface level. And I'm someone who's going to dig in a little deeper, who's going to understand the unintended consequences of the decisions that we make. I'm going to understand the perspective of the people in the building. I have out-of-the-box solutions that I've used for years to help create a better school environment that I would like to see applied at the district level. I have connections across the state and have learned things just in the past four years that I'd love to contribute. But I'm always going to look at things as an educator and as a principal and as a mother, and my solutions are going to come from that history. I do have a website, Barnett for School Board. I'd love for you to contact me there and tell me what you're thinking about.
Thank you very much. And I want to say thank you to each of our candidates, Ms. Laura Barnett, Mr. Richie Patton, and Ms. Casey Bryant. Thank you for your willingness to represent District Two on the School Board for the Clarksville Montgomery County School District. Thank you very, very much. Also, remember, early voting for the state primary and county general elections will take place July 12 through July 27. The location will be at the Election Commission Office. You can find them at 350 Pageant Lane. Once again, State Primary and County General Elections Day is on Thursday, August 1. I also want to say thank you to our panelists, Mr. Jay Alberta, Ms. Lornith Peters, and Ms. Susan Zidek. Thank you very, very much for your questions today. And also thanks to our timekeeper, Mr. Phil Harpel. And thank you also to the staff here at the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center for hosting today's forum. And thanks also to Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce, as well as to Rick Goodwin Productions for making this forum possible. Until next time, I'm Van Stokes. Thank you for watching.